I'd like to call this meeting in order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please. Here. So we're going to begin this evening, our first discussion, and the referral GPS services update, and then with the recognition of business partnership.
Good evening. So tonight, we'd like to welcome Mr. Ahmed Taker to come up and share a little bit about referral GPS and the partnership that it's had here with District 88. Some time back, certainly right after the pandemic, the board had really prioritized the mental health needs of our students and really wanted, you know, asked us to look for ways to find, to be able to increase the level of service to our students and to our families, and remove barriers to students accessing, you know, services. And so we have been very blessed to have been able to partner with referral GPS to really increase the level of service to our students. So with, where tonight, we're gonna have a short presentation. So usually, we just go right to the recognition of business partners, but tonight, we're gonna, we want to learn a little bit and just kind of have an update for the board of what's, what's, how these services have been playing out here in District 88. So come on up and, and please feel free to, to share with the board.
Thank you. Thank you all for having me today. It's summer, so my kids are out of school. And when they heard I was being recognized for something, they were super excited to come. So my, my family's here as well. Today's a really good day because it's one of those things where you just get to hear about the great stuff that's happening inside of your district. And so it's one of those feel-good presentations, very different than every budget conversation you've had, or, you know, discussions about masks or different things where you're like, oh gee, when is this gonna be done? This is gonna be a feel-good moment. I'd be remiss if I told you that any of this work would have been done without the leadership of the district, specifically of administration, but also Danielle and Erin have played such a pivotal role and have been such advocates for your students that I just want to recognize, you know, really, all three of them as being such just advocates for the people that live in this community and that attend this district. And I'll, I'll talk about kind of both of those in a moment. So thank you. Well, let's see. Before I jump into this, I'll tell you guys like a quick backstory of how I got to where I am and why I'm standing here in front of you guys today. So I grew up in Aurora, not too far away from here. Most of you guys are familiar with District 204. I went there kindergarten through 12th grade. I had a relatively normal childhood and grew up in what would be a normally, a very normal middle class. I think I said "normal" about six times there. Grew up at a time where there were no cell phones. You know, you used to go play with your friends at the community rec center and then call your parents' collect when you needed them to come pick you up. Anybody remember doing that? But it was like, state your name, and you'd say, I'm ready to be picked up. And then you'd hang out, and that would be your, that would be your message to your parents to pick you up. I joke with some of my friends that most of our hydration that those days came from our neighbors' garden hoses. Right? Every summer, you came home, dropped your bookbag, and then you were just out until the lights came, the streetlights came on, and then you came home for dinner. I had a normal, like, TV 90s childhood, kind of growing up in, in middle-class America. And it was a beautiful, beautiful childhood. But my life got turned upside down in a matter of a night when my father became ill. And I was about 11 or 12 years old, not too much older than my kids are now. And the days and years that progressed beyond that sent me into a roller coaster, rightfully so, as anybody who really was unsuspecting of some type of family illness or trauma that occurs, it took me a long time to figure out my kind of path. And what I realized is I was very attracted to mental health for a variety of different reasons. And I actually ended up, after college, working at a psychiatric institution called Linden Oaks. Most of you guys are very familiar with them. It's an acute care psychiatric hospital in Naperville. One of the jobs that I had there was helping people figure out, when they would call our crisis call center, where to go if the hospital wasn't the right place, which you can imagine, if you have enough courage to get on the phone to call a psychiatric hospital, you're going through something pretty serious. And in that moment, when we knew that the hospital only provided acute care, but that patient wasn't appropriate to come to us either because of insurance, or acuity, or age, or whatever the reason may be, we didn't want to tell them, I'm sorry, we're not the right place for you to go to. Good luck. Because far too often, that's what happens when someone is struggling, and you call and say, I really need help. If that's not the agency who can help you, the answer is, I'm sorry, good luck. Right? They either point you back to insurance or to another dead end, and oftentimes, that's where parents end up getting extremely frustrated, and kids feel like, I don't have any other option. And so at Linden Oaks, we started to think about, like, what is a better way to do this? Instead of telling people to call the number on the back of their insurance card, which, if any of you guys have done, know how excruciating that is to actually try and navigate the insurance kind of maze to figure out where you're supposed to go, what's a carve-out, what's my co-pay, who's a network, who's not a network. So we wanted to kind of remove that hurdle. And after years of trying to figure out where to send people to, I came up with this idea of referral GPS. In a, in a very, in its very basic form, it was, can we just create a directory of all the therapists in the community and what insurances they take? Like, that in itself would put me light-years ahead of where I am today. And so we started that. We started collecting all the little notebooks and binders and business cards that folks had collected over the years, and we digitized it all and put it into a database. And we started using that at the hospital. And a couple of years later, I was meeting with the local school district, and one of the assistant superintendents there was struggling with her daughter to get her into care. And she had asked me, do you know of anybody in the community? And so I pulled out my phone and quickly put in a couple of things and said, well, I can send you this, you know, via email or text message. Here's a couple of options. And her jaw hit the floor. It was like, I don't know what kind of magic you have in your phone right now, but like, I need this. My team needs this. Student Services spends hours trying to get families connected into care. And we're constantly hitting our head. And the reality is, if that's all we had to do, we'd probably do a really good job at it. But each of my Student Services team members wears 72 different hats on any given day. They don't have four hours to call practices and go, oh, there's a waitlist. When's your next opening? Right? Oh, do you speak this language? Do you take this carve-out HMO? Can you do sliding scale? There simply isn't enough time in the day to spend that amount of time for Student Services to help get people connected. And that's really where referral GPS was born, out of kind of that problem. So after years of facing these hurdles, we really set out to kind of create this referral system. We now partner with organizations strictly to help people get connected into care. So we're locally based in Illinois. We're still out of DuPage County. We're part of the community, and we're very well-resourced, well-versed in the resources within this community because we spent the greater part of, most of the careers of the folks that work in our company are all folks that are local, that either worked at the hospital, at a private practice, or something of that nature. So District 88 is one of the districts that we partner with, but there's a whole host of other districts in our community, in and around here. We partner with about 94 school districts in about a 35-mile radius. These are all names that you probably know because they're neighbors around here, from Addison District 4 being one of your feeders, to 203 and 204, Hinsdale 202, 99. And what I gotta say is, out of all of these districts, District 88 is probably on the forefront of many of kind of cutting-edge what districts look for, to say, how can I be innovative to figure out mental health? Because the reality is, regardless what student population you have in terms of demographics or financial or socioeconomic makeup, mental health doesn't really discriminate. It's gonna be prevalent in every community that we work in. And while the issues on surface level may seem different, they're actually all very similar, right? From Maywood to Evanston isn't that different. From, you know, Naperville to Bellwood isn't that different. And so the reality is, we have to start thinking outside the box to come up with solutions because the current system simply doesn't have capacity in the way that it's set up. And so referral GPS really does a couple of things with your district. One is, for Student Services, we link with them and give them access to that directory of local therapists and psychiatric prescribers. Because what we realized early on is, therapy is one thing, but finding a child and adolescent psychiatrist is also extremely difficult, sometimes at a multitude of difficulty, of difficulty than finding a therapist. And so in that, that database, you can use anything, data points like insurance, or language, or location, as well as whether or not the person wants to see someone in person or via telehealth. The second thing we do is, for families who may be pre-contemplative, they know they need some help, but they don't really know where to start. And so if you send them a list of, you know, 10 people to call, they're probably not gonna take that next step. And so you know that family needs a little bit more hand-holding. We created something called Care Navigation, where your Student Services team members can actually send us a referral and say, I've already talked to this parent. They need help. I've gotten a release of information. I want you to help them find an appointment. And so then they send that referral into us, and regardless what kind of language they speak, or what kind of insurance they have, we jump on the phone with them based on their schedule, right? So when they have availability, whether that's an evening, or a weekend, or a lunch break, or sometimes it's on a drive to work, which may be the only time that they're alone and feel comfortable actually having a conversation. And we talk to parents, and we kind of figure out exactly what's going on at home, as well as figure out what's going on from an insurance perspective, to determine where we can get them connected into. Then we know that there's a portion of your student population and your parent population that because of the stigma around mental health, regardless how much your Student Services will say, please come and talk to me, and have an open-door policy, there will be those that will never come and talk to someone at the school district because of that stigma around mental health. And so what we didn't want to do is create all this access for those who are willing to talk and tell everyone else, too bad, suffer in silence, right? So we wanted to create an open door for them to be able to search for things anonymously, but also, they themselves request Care Navigation and have the ability to connect with one of our navigators without involving the school district, if that's the major hurdle that they have in seeking care. And so we created a, a portal that they can go to and anonymously search without having to identify themselves, or they can request Care Navigation without going through the school district. And we do the same process where we jump on the phone with them based on their schedule and help them find an appointment and get connected into care. The last thing is really innovative. We started this probably about two and a half years ago, maybe three years ago. And that's a treatment fund, because what we realized is, what we were running into is, you have a lot of families who have insurance who don't know where to start, and we can help them find care because there's capacity. But then we have a lot of families who either don't have great insurance, or they have some type of governmental insurance, either Medicaid or managed Medicaid, or dual-eligible, or there are those that have, what do I call, underinsured. So I have a great insurance plan, but I have a $15,000 deductible. So the reality is, this is catastrophic insurance for me. I'm not gonna use it for my mental health, you know, primary care, so to speak. And so those folks really needed a lot more help figuring out where to go to. And we started first realizing that we could work with our existing capacity of master's-level-prepared interns at local practices that would help take our cases on a sliding-scale perspective. So we created kind of a network of different providers that were willing to take on our patients. But then we grew, which is a good thing, but also a bad thing. Because it was a good thing because a lot more people were getting connected into care. It was a bad thing because every time I called in a favor, a practice owner goes, this is the sixth time you called me today. Like, I have a business to run. There's only so much pro bono I can give you, right? And at the end of the day, I have to pay my people. So I know what you're doing is great, but there's gotta be a give and take here. And so we started talking with innovative, like-minded folks and saying, okay, what can we do? And we started coming up with different ways to be able to help offset some of the cost for those who can't financially afford to be able to seek treatment. And that's where the treatment fund came in. And so I'm proud to say, we first started with what's called the Evergreen Program. And we started with that because, as you can imagine, the hardest-to-navigate cases are not necessarily those who have Medicaid or managed Medicaid or no insurance. It's our McKenney-Vento families, right? Because the amount of complex socioeconomic and trauma components that most of our McKenney-Vento families are facing far exceed, on an average basis, what most of the other students experience. And you can see how difficult it would be when I call that same practice owner, instead of saying, hey, I need a sliding scale, I tell them, I need a zero scale. And I realized that because the first time I had called the practice owner and said, I need a sliding scale. I have a family who is considered homeless. They're in the area. They're very close to your practice. They're able to transport to get there. What can you do from a sliding-scale perspective? And they said, well, my full fee is 150. I can slide it down to 130. And I go, that's not a slide. I need like a full slide all the way down. You gave me a bump. And what we realized was, I needed a zero scale. And so we went to the state of Illinois and talked to them, local legislators, about McKenney-Vento funding that really does come from a federal level. And what we were able to do is come up with a treatment fund specifically for McKenney-Vento families that we now run for DuPage County, Kane, Cook, Kendall, Will, Lake, and suburban Cook. And basically, any McKenney-Vento family, as long as they're enrolled within your district and identified in the student information system as being McKenney-Vento-eligible, we have the ability to not only provide them Care Navigation, but also to pay for their treatment. Now, this initiative started about five years ago, and this was innovative, to the point where I've went to like national conferences and talked about how McKenney-Vento funding can be used differently than buying gas cards, right? Which is typically what most districts end up using McKenney-Vento funding for. It's like an extra backpack, a field trip, and gas cards. And it's like, all right, well, we know almost every one of these families could benefit from mental health support. How do we utilize this funding to do that? That's what first sparked my mind into this whole treatment fund component. The next component we had was actually our CARES program. And that's where Erin was instrumental in working with the Illinois Department of Public Health for a grant program that came up. And we partnered with 12 different districts in the area, and all of us put together a grant program that we submitted to the Illinois Department of Public Health that said, we want to help our kids by creating access into care. We'll help those that have insurance the way that they're supposed to go. We want to use some of this funding to be able to help offset the cost for those who otherwise can't afford it. Took us probably six months to write this grant proposal. We submitted it, and 12 out of 12 were awarded. And it was phenomenal, like, out of, you know, and I forget the percentages right now, but out of everything that, I think it was somewhere like 50% of the awards from IDPH for this particular grant went to this program between our 12 different districts. It was like, amazing. That then gave us another idea. As the Addison Mental Health Township had started recently, and we were talking about some of the components that they're looking at specifically for their Addison residents, they, in the foresight of Danielle, to say, hey, we should, this is a grant that I think would be a great idea, given that we serve all of Addison. And a lot of those kids are the same kids we're trying to help get into care. Can we utilize the same, similar models that we've already done and go to the Mental Health Board and present to them? And we did. And they listened to that story and said, yes, this is a worthy cause. You guys have proof of concept. It's already working. We'd love to be able to continue this on. The Illinois Department of Public Health actually came back to us and said, you guys have done such a good job with your CARES program. We're coming up with this new initiative where we want to help suicide prevention and suicide, what we call post-vention, typically what happens after a suicide. And we want to create a resource hub for all different school districts in Illinois, and we want to help students all throughout Illinois. But we need one district to lead that. The district they chose was District 88. And Erin put together a fantastic proposal and went to them and said, not only can we create that resource hub that can be useful for all different districts throughout the state of Illinois, but I also want to help those that end up on that resource hub and can't find how to get into care because of financial constraints. Can we utilize a treatment fund component there? Can we do what we've done in Addison, but make it available for students all over the state of Illinois? And we were awarded that. And so, again, I mean, pat yourselves on the back, pack this team on the back. Like, it's phenomenal to see, well, like, a small seed of an idea has grown into a forest of mental health treatment that really has been capable because of the support and the foresight that you guys had coming together post-COVID, saying, we want to do more with mental health. And that's how those ideas have kind of flourished into what you see today. We've provided over 3,500 treatment searches. Over 900 treatment sessions have been completed through these various different programs. Those 900 treatment sessions are just for District 88 students. Right? If we look at it beyond the impact that this has had through the 12 districts, there was another IDPH grant that we worked on that another eight districts from Lake County joined. So we now have about 20 districts in that collaborative. We're working, obviously, with Addison Township. We're working with Schaumburg Township. I mean, this thing has legs well beyond what any of us could have imagined when we came up with the idea of, we just want to help people get into care. Through the different grant programs, we've raised over $700,000 for mental health initiatives. Not all of those are for this treatment component, but they all kind of tie into mental health. And what we know is, it takes a community. You know, immediately when the last wave of the Illinois Department of Public Health grants were made available, first phone call I got was District 4, who said, you know how jealous I've been the last year that you guys have this in 88? And I, I wasn't there for District 4 when you guys had this opportunity. Like, we need to do this now. And I said, all right, Carrie, like, join our collaborative and let's do this. And they were awarded. And now I have the continuum. I can see kids that are gonna eventually end up in 88 and have the ability to then say, hey, where can we help them earlier on in their progression? To see if that can help avoid a hospitalization later on, right? Which you guys know is obviously much more disruptive to the educational journey of a student. And the better you can help them earlier, the better it'll be, not only for them, but also from a societal perspective, from a parent's perspective. So I'm gonna end with telling you guys a story from your district. And we've de-identified the information in here, just so it's not easily identifiable. So recently, Referral GPS received a Care Navigation request from a parent through that public website, right? So this is a parent who decided, I don't want to go through the school district. I just want to reach out to you guys directly. And by the way, when a parent does do that, we ask them what the reason is. And if the parent is shy or is saying, really, it's because of this whole, the stigma around it, we respect their privacy and say, I completely understand. We don't have to get the district involved. But if it's, if the parent says, I just don't know, I don't know who to even talk to there. That's when we end up contacting the district and saying, hey, I looked online. Here's the student's last name. Here's who their school social worker is. Is it okay if I loop her into this case? Right? So in this particular initial request, the mom was searching for resources for her child. And we did a triage with them, and the only time she had was during her lunch break to actually talk to us, which happens more often than not because it's kind of the only time that you're available without people around. So during that call, mom described her daughter's experiencing high anxiety, self-esteem issues, food avoidance, often tied to her own body image. And she was very scared that she would develop a full-blown eating disorder. And some of this comes from her own PTSD of having an eating disorder earlier in her life. And so seeing those signs in her daughter really freaked her out. And she's like, I need to try to hit this head-on so she doesn't go through the battle that I went through. So what we ended up doing is looking for an appropriate therapist who specializes in that whole self-esteem, body image concern, but that would work with that student in person. Because one of the things mom had said is, she can't be on camera. Like, it is, you know, she's screened out, and being on camera just exacerbates her anxiety. And so I have to see a therapist in person. That's, you need to find me. And so we went, talked to a bunch of different practices, and we talked to the parent really about parenting strategies and communication. But we were able to find, after calling about six different practices, we were able to find an appointment within nine days for that family to actually get into care. And we checked in with mom about three months later, and she said, I would love to tell you everything's great, and it's not, but everything's good. And that's better than what I would have imagined if I didn't do anything. And like, that's the end goal. You're not gonna be able to fix everything. But if I can get you a little better than what you were before you came to me, like, that in itself was worth it. So that's a little bit about referral GPS. I'll let Erin tell you a little more.
Hi, good evening. One thing that I want to make special mention of with referral GPS is, not only have we had a lot of success with language barriers, in terms of just putting them off to the side, and then regardless of what language, it's, you know, it's accessible. Social, emotional components that are, you know, needed, the service is able to handle that and to, you know, maintain the appropriate treatments. And then most importantly, too, is with the duration of treatment. So it's not necessarily like a one-shot or a one-session. It's a continuity of care up to eight. And so I think that's essential in terms of the needed supports, the mental health environments that, you know, kids, families, you know, people in our community find themselves in. And so that way, there's this ladder that they can continue to climb and reach, you know, the needed areas that they can in terms of being, you know, just supported. So, you know, thank you. And we're continually looking for new grant opportunities out there on behalf of our district, so.
Erin is very modest. Like, I'll tell you, out of, again, we work with over 90 districts. When there's a grant or a funding opportunity that comes up, this is the first person who will call me and say, hey, there's something on here. Like, you should look at this. And usually, it's another 93 districts who benefit from the fact that he keeps in touch with, here's what's happening at a state level, at a local level, at a federal level. So, I mean, thank you for all the work that you do. That's a lot of info. Any questions you guys?
Questions, comments, feedback, thoughts?
The McKenney grant funding that you said is coming from the federal, do we anticipate any cuts there?
Good question. So the right answer is, no one has any idea. Because it's not necessarily tied to Medicaid. So it's not part of like the big, beautiful bill. I forgot what they're calling it now. We're not anticipating that that will go away, but there is a, we'll know more in like September. We're fully funded right now until September, and then we'll know in September. But that is typically an annual, an annual funding that happens because it's not tied to a grant. Like, that state funding, or federal funding that goes to the state that then comes down on a regional level. And there's five regions in Illinois. No one at the state level knows what's going to happen with it. In years past, though, it's always kind of worked like clockwork. I think this is the first time that they're kind of pumping brakes and being like, well, what's, do we know what's gonna happen? Right now, I don't think anybody knows what's going to happen.
And I know York Township passed their mental health board. Have we heard anything about what they're doing yet?
We'll continue to investigate. Yeah, I know. Well, we received it through Addison Township, so that's been our focus.
York just passed it last fall, so I know that it's gonna take them a little while to get going, but... them a little while to get going, but.
We'll look for tips and tricks on what they did. Yeah. Oh, thank you.
So if you have that Addison CARES, is that the same as that Addison Township?
Yes.
CARES is 708. Is that the same, 708?
So it gets confusing because of the fact that we have an abundance of programs that we've started, and they're all really tied to separate funding sources. And we have to report on them separately. What we do, what we've done is made, regardless what door you enter, it's all going to end up in the same area, which is us getting you in. Really, all we're doing in the background is figuring out, okay, if you're a resident of Addison, your treatment would be paid from this bucket versus if you are a resident of...
Wooddale.
Wooddale, then you might, your funding would be paid from here. But from the person saying, hey, I need help, we're not asking them like, pick which one you belong to, because that's where it gets confusing, right? So while we have different sites that are up there based on, you know, what program we had launched, they all come into the same place.
Dr. Lannanhead, can you or Mr. Taker, either one, talk a little bit about our current funding status for this upcoming year? Like, for District 88, how long do we have in terms of, how long are we funded? Outside of the Addison, the 708 board, we know a little bit, right? But in terms of the other grant sources, IDPH, where are we for next year?
So IDPH runs on a different cycle. So we're through the end of August currently, but we're in the queue to be renewed. So we haven't received official written words saying, you're officially renewed. But we've been told it's coming, so.
What's odd about that is the like time period between now and August is such a short period of time. And IDPH is as short-staffed right now. And so what they're telling us is like, move forward with the initiative, because when we tell you, you may only have like three weeks to get the initiative done. So keep moving forward in the way that you're doing it, because you, you're already written in. We just haven't been able to give you the official letters to do it. So that's kind of, we're in this weird conundrum with them. But we're kind of continuing to move forward with it.
Are the parameters the same, that it's for District 88 students, but also family members? Is that part of the IDPH? I know, not all the funding sources will allow that, right? But there are some, there's some that it's also for family members as well?
Correct.
Okay. For those listening, that's, and watching this later, we've been pushing out, and we've been sharing as much as we can. But, you know, that's phenomenal. We never expected to have that opportunity as well, so. Thank you.
Question?
Do the recognition portion?
Sure.
Yeah. Transition into it. So we know, it's going to have these two separate items, right? But we're going to transition seamlessly here into the recognition portion. Certainly, you know, as you've heard, you know, tonight, this was, I think we never imagined the types of opportunities that would, that would be available through this level of, I think, collaboration, perseverance, to find the funding sources, creativity, and really passion. You could, you know, tell that this has been something very close to your heart. So I have a few things I'm going to read about you, if that's okay?
Sure.
And so if you can just bear with me just a moment. So this is part of, we do recognitions every, pretty much monthly, you know, for our business partners. And so this is, again, something that we have prioritized, knowing that we can't do this work alone, and we could have never gotten anywhere close to the level of what's been able to been provided to our families without your help and without your willingness to collaborate with our team. So, so we are very happy to continue our business partnership program, which acknowledges businesses, organizations, and individuals for their assistance in building futures for our students and helping to accomplish our mission and vision. We know these collaborations are vital to ensure our students are successful, and we greatly value and appreciate these partnerships. At District 88, the safety, health, and well-being of students and staff is our number one priority. And we know building relationships precedes learning, and we continue to focus on connecting with all students. For students to achieve academically, we must first meet their needs outside of the classroom, including providing mental health and social, emotional assistance. Ahmed Taker with Referral GPS is a prime example of an individual and organization working hand-in-hand with us to achieve our goals. As you heard during Ahmed's presentation, the services provided through Referral GPS have had a tremendously positive impact on our students, staff, and families. As Ahmed highlighted, he also has been a valuable partner in supporting District 88's effort to, efforts to secure grant funding for a range of mental health initiatives and resources that are helping to strengthen mental health services in the district. What stands out most about Ahmed is his passion for this work. He is the kind of partner who always shows up, whether it's meeting to answer questions, lending his voice to a committee, or sharing his expertise with schools and community organizations. He works with most of the schools in the area, and his presence is consistently felt throughout the region. At his request, Ahmed extends a heartfelt thank you to his wife, Tina, his study source of strength, and to his children, Arya and Arjun, who inspire his work, right? Is that right? Each and every day? Yeah, okay. His work every day. As you can see, Ahmed is a tremendous business partner. We're proud to honor him in recognition of his efforts. We're truly grateful for all he has done and continues to do for our students, families, and the broader community. Once again, just on behalf of our administrative team, the families of District 88, the students of District 8, and on behalf of the Board of Education, just can't thank you enough for, for all that you've done.
Thank you so much.
For this district and for the community. So our president will be presenting your award.
We have a flag. District 88 is one of our business partners. And we, again, appreciate everything that you've done for our community and the schools. It's, mental health is such an important thing. And it's especially friendly resources for people who don't have the insurance. It's so important. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for...
If there's anything else you want to say?
Thank you for allowing me to come and present, give you guys an update, and also for allowing this beautiful audience to come as well. Thank you again.
Okay. So we have some cake to celebrate, a birthday. So we'll take a short 10-minute break, because we have people that can help us eat the cake. And I think Danny wants to get a picture. So we'll take a short 10-minute break here. Thank you. Okay, we're back in open session. Roll call, please.
Jane.
Here.
Hoyer.
Finnegan.
Here.
Stout.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Here.
At this time, we will place on the agenda for petitions and hearings at the practice of the Board of Education. We provide a place on the agenda for and welcome comments and suggestions from the public. Do we have any comments?
Good evening. At this time, we do not have any public comments submitted.
Thank you. Then we move along to the public hearing concerning the intent of the Board of Education to sell not exceeding four million working cash fund bonds for the purpose of increasing the district's working cash fund. At this time, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Hoyer.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. So, motion is approved. I declare that the meeting is open for the public hearing pursuant to the Bond Issue Notification Act of the State of Illinois. By now, notice of the hearing was published in the Daily Herald on Wednesday, May 21st, 2025, in compliance with BINA. The purpose of the bond sale is for the sale of working cash funding bonds to increase the funds available and provide financial resources for capital projects, specifically future facility improvements and bus and vehicle fleet replacement needs. At this point, do we have any comments that you wanted to make, Ryan?
So, we typically have done this every three to four years to help take the burdens off of our operating funds to improve the facilities, so building improvement projects, as well as to replace the bus vehicles. So that way, they don't age, as well as at this time, you know, drivers add and buildings and grounds are equipped as well.
Okay. This time, I'd open to if there's any Board of Education members that would have any comments or questions they'd like to make. Seeing none, then I would like to open up to the public or the audience that there's any written comments or oral comments. Seeing none. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I move to adjourn the public hearing.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Stout.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Hoyer.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion carries, and I declare that the public hearing is now closed. Okay. Next, I'll move along into the motion to establish the consent agenda.
I move to establish a consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Hoyer.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Hoyer.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. We'll now move along to separate action items. First one is on A, engagement agreement for Beyond Your Base.
On April 28th, at the Board of Education meeting, the Board approved or gave consent for the proposal for community engagement, consulting services with Beyond Your Base, including the consulting fee of $86,500. Presented today is the actual services agreement with Beyond Your Base. So, this again had already been discussed and given approval, but this is the actual agreement that the Board would be approving tonight.
I move that the Board of Education approve the consulting services agreement with Beyond Your Base at the cost of $86,500.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Olson.
Yes.
Hoyer.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have the adoption of the early property tax resolution.
In accordance with the Board of Education's commitment to properly recognizing the timing of property tax collections in the financial reports of the districts, we are presenting the attached resolution that directs that the early property tax collections distributed by the DuPage County Treasurer are designated for the following fiscal year, 2025-26. Therefore, the early property taxes will not be included in the available resources and financial reports prepared on an accrual basis by the auditor for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the early property tax resolution for fiscal year 2025.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Hoyer.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have item 10C, the abatement from working cash fund for capital projects fund resolution.
The filing resolution is presented for the board approval to authorize the transfer of $2,360,641 from the working cash fund to the capital projects fund for the payment of building improvement projects works in the district. This transfer is scheduled to take place on June 17th to cover the accrued liability for the summer 2025 facility projects that the auditors will recognize in the current fiscal year. This accelerated transfer will avoid a fund deficit in the capital funds project for fiscal year 2026.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution abating the working cash fund for capital projects purposes effective June 17th, 2025, in the amount of $2,360, I'm sorry, $2,360,641 for the payment of building improvement projects.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Hoyer.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have item D, the copier lease.
So, you should have a revised memo in front of you. This is to add an additional 17 paper cut licenses. Originally, our technology department was trying to outsource it, see if we could find a cheaper item. But it turns out that it's about the same, so it would be better for us to just consolidate everything and have it all on one bill. So, we're adding it to the lease. We are recommending that the Board of Education accept the attached proposal from Canon to lease 63 new copiers and 43 paper cut licenses for Addison Trail, Willbrook, and the district office at a total cost of $6,168.09 per month for 60 months. We will also have a pay per page fee that we estimate will be approximately $5,587.42. The team reviewed the number and the placement location of the devices to maximize student and staff support. Many of the placements will remain the same, but we will improve access to students. The monthly costs will include paper cut, which will allow students and staff to send documents to a queue and print release to a printer. Using paper cut will help the district improve the safety and confidentiality of documents along with eliminating waste, as users will be able to print when they are ready and not need to reprint any documents that they may have been lost or misplaced by using other copiers. The new copiers are replaced units that are over 10 years old. Unfortunately, with the age of the and use of the existing equipment, there have been excessive repair calls and maintenance contracts have increased as repair parts are becoming more difficult to find. After the initial five-year lease, we plan to reset our replacement cycle and do partial replacements each year. Due to the pandemic, we fell off the cycle and utilized the older machines without replacement. We would place about 20 copiers per round, and the first round of replacements would occur after the lease expires. The second and third rounds would occur after the following two years. From this point, we will have established a five-year cycle for each grouping. Copiers typically have a useful life of five years before repairs become more frequent and replacement is warranted. Canon also will provide staff training at no additional cost, and this lease is cost neutral, so we will be saving about $65 per month with our current costs. Canon provided us with pricing based on a contract from Omni Partners Cooperative. Omni is a purchasing cooperative that enables public entities, including school districts, to purchase from vendors holding competitively solicited contracts. Pricing is public information and listed under omnipartners.com. All Omni contracted devices cannot be sold over the contracted price.
I move that the Board of Education accept the proposal from Canon to lease 63 new copiers and 43 paper cut licenses for Addison Trail, Willbrook, and the district office for a total cost of $6,168.09 per month for 60 months.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Stout.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Hoyer.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. Let's move along to discussion items. First one is the property casualty liability renewal for 2025-26.
All right. So, tonight, I'm bringing two favorable renewals. The first one is Click, the Collective Liability Insurance Cooperative. We have been a member with Click since November 2004. Click is a self-funded insurance cooperative currently representing 193 school districts throughout Illinois. The coverage includes all property, automobile, general liability, boiler machinery, school board liability, crime, student accident, concussion, excess property, excess liability, cyber risk, fiduciary liability, and if needed, foreign travel and builder's risks. The annual renewal meeting for 25-26 was held on May 15th with the final program funding approved by the membership. Therefore, our annual premiums, including the separate fiduciary policy, will be $427,283, which reflects an increase of $5,983, or 1.4%. As reference, last year's renewal was 5.5%. This renewal reflects our five-year loss ratio, which decreased from 99.8% from the prior year to 27.9%. Our five-year loss ratio resulted in a premium credit of 15.9%, and it is primarily due to the air conditioning chiller claim from 2018-19 falling off the calculation. Certain coverages or lines in the policy saw some large percentage increases, such as the excess liability, which was just under 34%, and general liability of 13%. However, one line that was surprisingly, it came down, was the primary cyber liability coverage, which saw a 9.3% decrease in cost from the prior year. The Click pool continues to provide extensive coverage at competitive pricing levels exclusively for schools. Every year, we complete a comprehensive risk assessment and claim review with the insurance pool to then target areas to minimize future losses and target safety training. We appreciate the quality of the programming and professional services for both loss control and claims handling that the Click pool provides, and we look forward to working with Click and their team and partners to minimize our risk exposure for the district. We are very pleased with the renewal this year.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Then we'll move on to the compensation insurance renewal. It says the insurance month, huh?
It says the insurance month, and if you like the Click renewal, you're gonna love the Self renewal. So, Self or the School Employee Loss Fund Cooperative, we've been members since 2002. It is a cooperative of 86 school districts in Illinois that Self insure for workers' compensation insurance. The annual renewal meeting for 25-26 was held on May 16th with the final programming funding approved by the majority of the members. Our premium of $146,230 represents a decrease of just under $47,000, or approximately a 24% decrease over the prior year. One of the primary benefits of purchasing insurance through a cooperative is that during the good years, we receive the refund of prior year surplus. The returns ultimately offset any increase in our annual salaries and the state-established insurance rate changes. The Self Co-op has refunded a combined $29 million since 2004. Our renewal for next fiscal year, 25-26, reflects a $47,741 refund of prior year premiums. This is what helped to roll down that price. There are three main factors that impact the basic workers' compensation insurance premium. The first is claims or loss experience. The second is payroll changes, and the third is statutory rate changes that are set by the state. The past three years, our claims experience reflects an 88% loss ratio, which means the pool is paying out less than we pay in for every dollar of premium. The total claims experience for the past three years is $459,478, which is an increase of $20,152 over the prior year. In the areas that we do see active claim activity, the primary reason continues to be mostly due to slip, trips, and falls, or strain, or exertion activities. We do work closely with the loss prevention team at Self to conduct self-training and participate in loss prevention annually. This year, we conducted two self, two loss control training events, including risk assessment and control, and then a claim review, and then slip, trip, fall prevention, proper ladder safety, and other related topics for the maintenance and custodial staff. We appreciate the professionalism services of both loss control and claim support from the Self pool. In addition, the staff who handles the reporting of accidents are diligent in making sure all details are captured in a timely manner to expedite the processing by the claims adjusters. The one unique thing about the Self program is annually, they provide a safety grant, which we have used over the years to purchase equipment to help staff with lifting having items, ladder replacements, cleaning supplies. I think last year, we bought what they call pig vacuums, which are vacuums that extend, you know, several feet up in the air to get to the second and third floor windows to help, you know, take people off of ladders and, you know, keep them on their feet on the floor. So, we look forward to continuing to our work with the Self Co-op in the coming year to minimize injuries to our staff.
Any questions? Moving on to the ELA and math proficiency proposal.
Good evening. Today, I'd like to discuss with the Board a proposal to incorporate some math and English proficiency indicators and incorporate them into our strategic plan dashboard. But before we jump into that, I wanted to paint the broader picture of where these indicators come from and what their history is. So, in 2015, the Every Student Succeeds Act was enacted at the end of 2015, and in 2016, ISB created eight indicators that suggested that if students met these indicators, they would be college and career ready. Okay? And the first indicator is that if a student has a GPA of 2.8 or higher attendance, they would take their attendance and average their junior and senior year attendance, and if it was 95% or greater, they met that indicator for college and career readiness. They consider composite ACT scores or SAT scores, so that ACT if they got a 30 or higher or an SAT of 1,400 or higher. And then regarding the career pieces and also academic pieces, if they earned a college and career pathway endorsement, that would count as an indicator, or they would have to do all three of these things. They would have to identify a career area interest by the end of their sophomore year. They would also have to have at least one academic indicator showing proficiency in ELA and math, and then three or more career-ready indicators. So, there are eight different indicators on this page right now that paints the picture of the student being college and career-ready. So, specifically, with the ELA academic indicators, the student has to, by the end of their senior year, meet one of these goals. Okay? So, the first is grades. They could get a grade of an A, B, or C in an ELA AP course. They can get an A, B, or C in a dual-credit English course, and the same with a transitional English course. Okay? Also, an exam score on the ACT or the SAT or an AP exam score three or higher will also prove that they are proficient in English. And the reason why I have those two courses highlighted is because we recently added these courses for this past school year for 24-25. So, we added English 12 Dual Credit and also Rhetoric of Contemporary Topics. The majority of our students are in one of these classes that you see for English. For math, it is very similar. So, for a student to be proficient in math under the college and career readiness indicators, they need a score of A, B, or C in one of those three AP courses, in the dual-credit courses that are listed there, College Algebra CC or Calculus III CC, Transitional Course, which we do offer, it's Quantitative Literacy and Statistics or Algebra II. They can also use their exam scores, a 22 in a fourth-year math course, a 540 in a fourth-year math course. And the reason why they add that fourth-year math course is because in Illinois, there's a three-year requirement for math. Right? So, if they take that extra year and they have the score on the exam, they're proficient in math. Or if they have an AP score of three or higher on any of those APs above there. And then finally, they're, the career-ready indicators, they meet this one if they satisfy three or more of any of these criteria. So, if it's a career development experience, if they earn a career industry credential, if they take the ASVAB and score 31 or higher, work on different pathway courses, career studies, consistent employment for 12 months, consecutive summer employment, community service, and then co-curriculars. So, if they meet any of these three, they met that indicator for career-ready. So, the big picture of this is that the college and career-ready indicators, they don't impact our summative rating. There's been a plan for the last three years that it was gonna start being incorporated into the summative rating. They have not yet been incorporated, and they won't be incorporated for next year. But there is, in the accountability tab of the report card, there's an area called summative meta-indicators. And these meta-indicators are those eight pieces I just talked about, the GPA, the attendance, career readiness indicators. And they are shown on the report card. And they are shown on the report card. So this is what our '23-'24, so from the year before this one, this is what the meta indicators for ELA show. And so for English, 33% of our students were proficient, and the state was about 48%. And my proposal to include these moving forward is because we've added that English 12 Dual Credit, and we've also added the Transitional English, our percentages, Shu Lam and I sat down and we crunched some numbers, our estimation is we'll have about 57% of our students meeting proficiency in English as a result of adding these courses, okay, for our students. Also with the math, our students in math, 69% were proficient and about 70% were in the state. We anticipate those to stay the same because our coursework has been consistent over the past couple of years. So in the dashboard, under Teaching and Learning, there are three goals. We have reading and math achievement goals, we have graduation rate, and college credits and career certifications. I would like to include the ELA and math proficiencies in the reading and math achievement because if we look at where our goal is, it's to increase reading and math achievement for all students through rigorous externally-validated curriculum that reflects the diversity and unique experiences of our students, comprehensive academic supports, consistent gridding, and assessment practices, and equitable distribution of resources. I feel like it perfectly fits. We have these courses that are externally validated, we've worked with COD and Elmhurst University, and also our transitional courses have been approved by the committees in Illinois. Our teachers have worked hard to get the certifications and to offer the courses, and we feel that this will just be another example to showcase how our students are achieving compared to the rest of the students across the state. So thank you, and I'll take any questions.
I don't see any objections to it.
What's that?
I said, "I don't see any objections to it." Although, I was just looking at it going, "I don't know if I was in high school, if I would've met those." So I guess I'm not, I'm still not successful, am I?
It seems very high. And if we, I didn't know how much to put in, because I knew we were just talking about the ELA and the math, but even if you compare even the career pathway endorsements, the percentages are very low across the state. So I feel like that's why that's not part of the summative designation yet, because we still have some ways to go with that. Thank you.
Next, Levin D., review of board policies.
So tonight earlier, we had the Policy Committee met to review the policies that have been released in this most current issue of press, which comes from the Illinois Association of School Boards. We did review the policies in committee. There were a couple slight adjustments that will be reflected in, before we ask the board to take action in the next meeting, again, very minor changes. These revisions are largely related to the Title IX changes, going back from the 2024 regulations to the 2020 regulations. So it caused a lot of language updates within the policies. So no significant change in practice will be recommended with these, and we'll bring them back on the 23rd for board approval.
Any questions? Move along then to the information. No discussion, the Freedom of Information request is in the packet, and then move on to school recognition.
Good evening. On behalf of principals at Addison Trail in Willowbrook, Jack Andrews and Dr. Daniel Kraus just want to share a few updates as they head into the summer months here. So from Addison Trail High School, Principal Andrews wanted to share that Addison Trail wrapped up a great school year on May 29th with students finishing their final exams and starting summer break. With that, they are already in full swing with summer events. About 100 students are participating in summer school, and summer camps have started as well. They would like to remind families that it isn't too late to sign up for summer camps, even if they've missed a day or two, and for more information, families can go to Summer also means the buildings and grounds staff members at Addison Trail are in full cleaning mode, turning over every classroom and office to give the building a refresh before the new school year starts. We also have a few summer construction projects happening, with our east turf being replaced, new hot water system installed, and more. Summer band practices also have kicked off, and the student musicians are preparing for a few summer gigs. Willowbrook and Addison Trail bands will join together for the Kiwanis Wednesday Summer Concert on June 25th in Villa Park, as well as the Independence Day Parade on July 4th, which is hosted by the Villa Park VFW Post 2801. The groups also will perform together during the Addison Medina Schreiners Parade on August 24th. As a reminder, registration for the '25-'26 school year is open, and all families should have received information via email to register. Details also can be viewed online at dopage88.net/registration. Thank you for supporting Addison Trail through another amazing school year. And from Willowbrook, with summer school, summer school began on Monday, June 2nd. Nearly 200 students are completing courses from the '24-'25 school year or courses required for graduation. Last week, our students recovered or completed more than 30 credits. Willowbrook also has more than 20 new freshman students in its learning services and EL programs who are at Willowbrook to transition to the high school. With the summer camps, those began today, Monday, June 9th, for the athletic programs, and they'll have updated participation numbers later this week. And again, families are still able to join the summer camps, and they can do that by going online to dopage88.net/wbathletics. And speaking of athletics, Willowbrook would like to congratulate three students from the Boys Track and Field Team, Otis Powell, Jaden Royal, and Jake Koterba, all competed in the IHSA Boys Track and Field State Championships this past weekend at Eastern Illinois University. Jake competed in the shot put and finished in 18th place. Jaden competed in the triple jump and placed 13th overall. And Otis competed in the high jump and earned all-state honors with a seventh-place finish. Willowbrook also would like to congratulate the varsity softball team, as well as the varsity baseball team, on their outstanding seasons. And lastly, Willowbrook would like to share two important upcoming dates. On June 19th, there will be no summer school or camps that day, and on July 4th, the Independence Day Parade, hosted by the Villa Park VFW Post 2801, will take place. And again, the Willowbrook and Addison Trail marching bands will combine to perform together during that event. Thank you.
Thank you. Any board member reports?
Two things. A celebration of life will take place this Saturday from 12 to 4 for former Willowbrook teacher L. O. at Sugar Creek. The family has established a Low Legacy Scholarship to benefit our CTE students in honor of Coach Lowe and his wife, who was also a teacher. And then, secondly, I just wanted to express condolences to our District 45 family on the sudden passing of their past board member, Tracy Roman. She was very dedicated to the students that eventually became our students. Her husband, John, served as an active member of the CAC when his kids attended Willowbrook, so just wanted to give my sympathies.
Anything else? For Lynn, one of the, I guess, kind of exciting, good things that came out of this last session is the dual-credit bill. They finally got through, which basically allows a mechanism for, you know, if there's an issue of trying to get that accreditation for our teachers to teach the dual-credit, there's a provision that they'll work through. So hopefully, we don't have as many issues in the future, so. But it's something they've been working on for two years, so it was nice to finally get that through. And, you know, it's great that we're a part of this cooperative with all the other districts in the county, to have already have a kid down there for that. So, move along then to Superintendent Report. Oh, okay. Any public comments?
Good evening. At this time, we do not have any public comments submitted.
Okay. Then announcements, the next Board of Education meeting is gonna be held on Monday, June 23rd, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the District Boardroom, located at the District Administrative Offices, Two Friendship Plaza, Addison, Illinois 60101. And the next Board of Education meeting will be held on Monday, August 11th, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the District Boardroom, located at District Administrative Offices, Two Friendship Plaza, Addison, Illinois 60101. At this time, I entertain a motion to move into closed sessions for the purposes of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine validity, however, needing to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the local government. Wage Increase and Transferring Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with the SAC, and be collective negotiating matters between the public bodies, employees, other representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Tinnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
There's action that's necessitated by the closed session. First one is item 21A, administrative restructuring recommendation. I don't entertain a motion.
There's number one and number two.
Number one and two.
Yeah, okay.
I move that the Board of Education approve the revised job description and position title as follows. Number one, approve the revised job description for the position of athletic director and change the position title to assistant principal for athletics and operations. Change the position title of Umberto Ayala to assistant principal for athletics and operations at Addison Trail High School.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? CNN, roll call please.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. I entertain the second motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the revised job description and position title as follows. Approve the revised job description for the position of athletic director and change the position title to assistant principal for athletics and operations. Change the position title of Edward Sullivan to assistant principal for athletics and operations at Willowbrook High School.
Okay. Any kind of questions, comments? CNN, roll call please.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Next we have item 21B, the Tier Two Administrative Benefit Adjustment. I entertain a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Tier Two Administrator Benefit Adjustment consisting of a supplemental 403B contribution for TRS Tier Two Administrators as described in closed session.
Second.
Any questions, comments? CNN, roll call.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, I entertain a motion regarding the administrative management union exempt employees' compensation adjustments.
I move that the Board of Education approve the increase in the compensation pool for administrators, management, non-union exempt employees who are not on a multi-year compensation agreement or retirement contract for the 2025-2026 school year not to exceed a total increase of the CPIU, which is PTAL capped at 5%, as reported for December 31, 2023, equivalent to 3.4%.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Roll call please.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, I entertain a motion with regards to education, the clerical and technical staff tentative agreement.
I move that the Board of Education adopt and approve the 2025-2028 District ADA Clerical and Technical Staff Contract.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? CNN, roll call.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have item E, Notice to Remedy.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution authorizing and approving issuance of a notice to remedy for employee number 06092025A.
Second.
Any questions, comments? CNN, roll call.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, move item F, Termination of Employee.
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendation for termination of employee number 06092025B.
Second.
Any questions or comments? CNN, roll call.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Aye, a sabbat. Meeting's adjourned.